I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? I've got a couple items I'd like to add to it. We don't have enough to do today. Add one for the discussion of the Rock and Loom Fund that we presently have, and we need to talk about its future. And also, a discussion on the YMCA, potential YMCA market study.
Vote for approval?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the distinct honor of recognizing one of our own this morning. Like to read a resolution, whereas Reed Marston has served the people of Person County during his tenure working for Person County General Services Department as a grounds maintenance supervisor, and whereas Reed Marston has served the citizens of Person County with honor, integrity, sincerity, dedication, provided accurate concise services for thirteen years, June of '03 to June 16. Whereas Reed Marston has earned the respect and admiration of all who have known him, worked with him throughout his career, and whereas the county, a person recognizes many contributions Reed Marston has made to the county and offers him sincere best wishes for his retirement. Now therefore, I, David Newell Senior Chairman, Person County Commissioners, do hereby extend the resolution of appreciation - I'll be right back - to Reed Marston for continually striving to make Roxboro and Person County about a place to live. It is my distinct honor to offer this to my friend Reed Marston.
I just want to say that I've been doing working for Person County General Services. I love my job. I love the people I work with. It's a great place to work. Thank you all for the job y'all do.
Thank you for your service.
All right, now thank the county manager, hasn't, don't go away, the county manager's got a few accolades she wants to...
Yes, so Reed Supervisor Ray Fushi, who's our General Services Director, could not be here this morning, but he didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank you for the job that you've done, and in fact, he even gave me some words that he asked me to read on his behalf to you Reed. He says that Reed was the type of supervisor employee that every manager loves to have. He took tremendous pride in his job and always wanted the county properties to look their best. In fact, I cannot ever remember getting a complaint on the quality of work of Reed's team. Reed required little to no supervision, he just instinctively knew what to do and when to do it. He was admired and respected by all that worked with him or for him, and he earned this respect by knowing how to treat people. He will be missed, but we all wish him the best with his retirement plans. Of course, I echo those words as well.
Glad to be working for Reed too. He was a great boss, and David also.
Yes, good. Thank you Reed.
Thank you.
We wish you the best.
All right, we have a public hearing here for amendment to the Person County Amnest Franchise Ordinance. Do I have a motion to go and open a public hearing?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We, uh, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Doug Young, if you would, uh, come enlighten us on what our changes are gonna be, or proposed to be.
In your package, you've received a strike-through type, uh, changes to the amnest ordinance. Currently, our amnest services, uh, we do not have one available. So, we looked at the ordinance to allow, uh, to do some housekeeping, and then to allow us to open this up to have more than one franchise as the county sees fit. Pretty much, that's the ordinance, bringing it up to date, uh, as you see there. To where mainly, the main thing is to bring in the one or more franchise as the county sees fits for, uh, the ordinance, as it's written down. And I'll entertain any kind of questions, um, either by the board or from the general public. Other changes that you may see in here is just bringing it up to date on some communications, uh, radio that they'll have, and, um, make sure they have a toll-free number that the general public and businesses can, can have for, to reach them at no cost.
Everybody had a chance to look at the ordinance? Any more questions for Doug? Any public comments concerning this?
No one signed up, sir.
Okay. Have a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're back in session. Uh, we need to act on this ordinance if we want to implement it. Have a motion to accept his...
Vote for approval?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have another public hearing. First, we got to do a little swearing. Anybody concerning the, uh, Whit Town Solar Project?
This is named, so send it out.
All right, Shane Shields, Doug York, Richard Kirkland.
Mr. Sorillo.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Sorillo?
Is Mike back there with me? Mike back there?
Mike Sorillo.
He always likes to make a grin in there. All right, gentlemen, if you would, uh, as I read this, repeat your name, and then I'll finish it. Aye?
Aye. Shane Shields.
Okay, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth as testimony offered in the public hearing for request of Whit Town Solar LLC for a special use permit for a solar farm, electrical generating facility on Whit Town Road, Roxboro, North Carolina, tax map 104, parcel four. All right, at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Sorillo, if he can give us the details of the situation.
Excellent.
Don't forget to open the public hearing.
All right, have a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in the public hearing.
This is a special use permit request, um, it's for a solar energy generating facility. It's located on Whit Town Road, um, in the Roxboro Township. The zoning is rural conservation district. There's a copy of, uh, the site plan in your packets against the wall as well. So there's both of those. I wanted to read, allow the conditions of approval for the record. The first is that the applicant would obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT. Copy of that to be retained by the planning department. The applicant's to obtain an erosion and sedimentation control plan. Copy of that will be, uh, retained in the planning department. The final as-built will be submitted to the planning and zoning department prior to the issuance of a CO. Access to the site will be a minimum of twenty feet in width, with parking to accommodate two vehicles, and a turnaround minimum of seventy feet for emergency vehicles. The applicant shall retain, or obtain all federal, state, and local permits that are required the applicant to meet all the conditions of the Person County zoning ordinance. And last, the applicant will need to obtain the zoning permit and building permit from Person County before any construction. The planning board reviewed the applicant and, uh, the application and approved the, uh, the application for a special use permit by a vote of six to zero on June ninth, 2016.
All right, you have any questions for Mike? If not, would Mr. Shields come forward, or whoever wants to speak?
Thank you Chairman David York. I was Smithmore Leatherwood, 434 Faithful Street, Suite 2800 Raleigh, North Carolina, 27601. I'm here on behalf of Whit Town Solar and its parent, uh, company Cypress Creek Renewable. They're the applicants in this case. Also, Shane Shields with Cypress Creek is here. Also with us is Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals, and the property owner, Mr. Heeks. We handed out a packet of information to, uh, hopefully, speed up the hearing process, including in that packet of information is a copy of the application, copy of the site plan, and then a, an affidavit from Mr. Shields, an affidavit and an impact report from Mr. Kirkland. Uh, those documents, uh, establish both those gentlemen as experts in their field as to what they testify to in their affidavits, uh, who believe that with their familiarity with the site, the site plan, and the general vicinity of the property, that all of the findings necessary in your ordinance, uh, that need to be made, can be made. I'm happy to go into greater detail, uh, of each of those findings. If the board so, uh, requests, we're all available to answer any questions the board might have. But I think, uh, that the evidence before you that's been submitted, and we would offer these affidavits into the record, that they, uh, provide sufficient record for you to make the necessary findings. We're happy to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. York? Any relation?
Not to knowledge.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's a great name, though.
Didn't know if we had a conflict yet.
You're always thinking.
All right, uh, Mike, do you have anybody responding to this?
Uh, no, sir, we did not.
Planning board, we did not?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody?
Public, public. No public?
All right, I have a motion to close public hearing.
So move.
All in favor? Now... We have a, uh, do I have a motion to grant their request?
Motion to approve the request, all.
Special use permit.
First, special use permit.
All right, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have ten minutes set aside for informal comments. You gotta listen.
No one signed up.
Nobody?
Nobody. I would like to sign up, but...
Come right ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, sometimes traffic on 158, feel dark. Though never as many on the meeting, on the day that the commissioners meet, I wonder if that's on purpose anyway.
The what?
I said, but never as many, never as many as on the day of the commissioners meeting, which is maybe on purpose, I don't know, never as many trucks. Only about four this morning. I just wanted to say that I had a lot of things to say, especially about our local, uh, newspaper, which actually threatened the people of Mount Tursa that if they worked for trying to help the people in northern Person County with the coal ash, that we might get, you know. It's the first time I've ever known a local paper to threaten the people, and if you fight for that... Well, I want to let the local paper and you commissioners know that we in Mount Tursa, which is a big district, okay, care, even though there's no population increase down there, and no new homes built, except on farms that families have no place else to go, and their children will build or put up pre-fab houses or whatever they are able to afford. So we've had no increase, uh, there, though our taxes have increased. But anyway, um, I've never seen a local paper that would actually threaten the whole thing if you fight, but I want you to let you know and them know that we care about the people in northern Person County. Now, nobody, we know nobody cares about us. It's twenty years of no caring about us, except for a few times. But we do care about the people up there, and we certainly care about our own selves. And, uh, and don't threaten us, you know, uh, because if once we all die, then you can have it. I want to let you know that I want to speak just a little on recycling. I've used two bags like this for fifteen years, and they last for groceries. And even after I finish, they're recyclable when it's torn apart. This, when I shop at, uh, Just Save, which is in Person County, this is what I use. Don't even have to tell them that. I put my bottles in the basket, everything else goes in here. When I shop in Harris Tita in Durham, these are recyclable completely, even when you finish with them. You can recycle them. And, just an example, there are my recycle tags. So if I get sick from something I ate, I've got about six weeks in here, okay, of tags that I can say, I bought it here. After work, you can do a lot of things after you retire. This is good for kids, my grandkids, it's mandarin oranges, guess what? It's a five, it's recyclable. There are a lot of things I usually don't buy unless I have to, that if it's not recyclable. I look on every can, I look on every plastic thing to make sure it's recyclable. And I recycle about ninety-five percent of what I use.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? All right. Do I have any thing you want to change on the consent agenda? If not, have a motion to accept it as presented?
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Young, if you would, come forward and, uh, let us know what kind of a resolution you require. Mr. Young?
Anybody hear you this morning, Dave?
Okay.
I'm gonna get him one of my headset.
All right, Mr. Young, if you would, present us with what resolution you would like for us to...
We have, uh, two applicants that approached the, uh, county, and after reviewing their applications, the staff and everything, we'd like to present to the board for two of them, one for North State Amnest Medical Transport for Advanced Life Support Transportation currently, and the other is Regional One EMS for basic life support, uh, medical transport. Both of these, uh, companies are, um, have gone through, uh, checks, like I said, from the staff, and we feel that these are very comfortable, competent, uh, agencies that can serve our county, both for the private sector and the public sector. As you know, as we mentioned before, uh, we presenting two. We really, uh, like to look at that to give both the private and the public, um, a choice. This gives competition and, uh, and for the, for both the public and the private. Both of these agencies are here, if you have any questions detailed about them, but they both, uh, will share, uh, that they will be within a reasonable amount of, um, response to our county and our needs.
How many units will they be operating?
They'll be required to have at least two available to us. Now, both companies have much more available units above that, but they are, they are required to have two available for our county.
Two each?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, now, we can, if other people come along, we're not restricted to two. We can have as many if we won't come.
Right, the, the ordinance is, it opens it up to...
Two or more, doesn't it?
Two or more, and for convenience.
All right. Anybody got any questions? If not...
Where would these, I mean, where would they be housed at? I mean, they just want to be...
Well, in, in, in the ordinance, there'll be reasonable response time. One of the, uh, agencies, uh, will both have said that they would put a place here in Person County. One is pursuing, Regional One is pursuing to, to follow through with that, but they're required to be within a reasonable amount of response time. And both their, uh, locations are what we consider to be real reasonable.
So what would be the two closest locations? To the county line?
From the, from the county line base, one is out of Danville, Virginia, which is about a thirty-five, forty mile, that was in Wake County, depending on traffic, but, uh, even after that, it would be within about a forty-five mile, forty-five minute, uh, response time.
So they won't be based here?
They are not required to be based here. One, like I said, Regional One has voice that they are, would be looking at coming here. Uh, the other one said they would if they, if the county would require that, uh, and they may be still, uh, I would... I'm not gonna listen here, but, uh, medical transport has said that they would come here. They are, uh, right now, uh, in the process of getting a franchise in Durham County. They have one in, in, in Orange. And their plans are during the daytime, when they, when the peak, um, hours of their responsibility, of their call volume, is to have their trucks available at the Durham, Orange, Person area, and they will respond out from those areas. Uh, at night, they would come out of their Wake County office, which the volume would pretty much be just for the hospital and nursing home, typically at that time.
All right, now, these are not set up in any way to be backup for your plate, plate people?
It is in the con, it is in the franchise and in their contract or their agreement that if we should call them, they could be available to us. Yes, sir.
This is for BLS or ALS or what?
For both.
Both?
Should, should, I, you know, should, should they come, but that's based on availability of their trucks.
All right, I have a motion to accept the resolution.
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Commissioner Jeffers, if you would, uh...
I am going to call on Jason Torian. One of my committee assignments, and he's going to present it to you. He's also on the committee representing, what township, Jason?
Allen.
Allensville.
I didn't realize that was going to come up before the other thing I'm here for, but...
Your other item was on consent, Jason.
Okay.
The road closure.
All right, um, I'm coming to you on behalf of the Person County Environmental Issues Advisory Committee. I think you all have the recommendations in front of you that have it, don't have that? Yeah, that, okay, all right, so, um, first thing I'll do is I'll, I'll read those to you. You know, th- these are really, again, just recommendations for, uh, not, not requesting any action other than just, um, you know, recording that this is the, the recommendations of the committee. First, uh, for recommendations for, um, reducing the amount of litter on, on the roadside, so. First is an increase to Person County Solid Waste user fee by five dollars per year to fund litter pickup and removal, alternatively obtaining grant funding from a foundation. A modest increase of grant funding covers operational expenses of hiring part-time employees to pick up litter, bagging trash, and recyclables separately. Uh, second recommendation, greater enforcement of existing litter and recycling laws. The third one is continue with prison crews picking up litter. Fourth, assigned citizens who have been court ordered to perform community service to pick up litter, community service supervisor to coordinate with the county for assignments. Uh, next one is increase awareness and encourage citizen groups to participate in the Adopt a Highway program. Next one is place high resolution portable roadside cameras in areas frequently littered to identify and prosecute offenders throughout Person County. And, uh, lastly, education campaign to encourage schools to set up and participate in recycling. Increase awareness of harmful effects of litter. The Environmental Issues Advisory Committee to be a resource to support the creation of environmental clubs, and work with parent-teacher associations in each school for implementation and fundraising. So you have that, and you should also have some resolutions that we came up with, some pertaining to you all, but, um, two, two are actually pertaining to DOT, one to the General Assembly. But the last one, um, we all see in that, starts, whereas landfill space can be minimized, you got that? You got it, all right. So the last one starts off, whereas landfill space use can be minimized through the use of our recycling center, whereas the statewide waste reduction goal is forty percent, and Person County is at about five percent. Whereas it costs county citizens approximately forty dollars a ton to bury, to bury a ton of recyclables, whereas Person County is losing a revenue stream when people fail to recycle, and whereas Person County is violating state laws, uh, state recycling laws by wasting these valuable resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Person County Board of Commissioners take a position on recycling that shows they are examples for citizens to follow, initiate programs to maximize the use of our recycling center, and three, require citizens to abide by state laws and either bring their recyclables to the Person County Recycling Center or pay a collector to dispose of them in the proper manner. And, you know, well, again, we're not asking that you take any action on that today, but we would like you to consider that and possibly set up a time for another meeting where you would consider adopting, um, a resolution for countywide mandatory recycling. And I have, um, a list of items right here that are already banned by state law, but we're not really enforcing, I got, uh, those laws here in this county. So again, that's really, um, yeah, I don't know if you have any questions, um...
Uh, biggest question I'd have is how would you police any of these?
Well, that's something that you could have the county manager look into. I mean, I know it would be difficult to say, police someone who isn't having their, their garbage picked up, you know, who's taking it to the landfill themselves, but we do have, uh, we currently have trash pick up in the city, and we have, uh, trash and recycling pick up in the county. So it could be policed, and that, and that, it would be easy to police that, you know. You can, you can look through that. Can't look through something that somebody's taking, you know, in the back of their truck, of course, but, you know, so there, there, there's a start at least, but again, that would be something that the county would have to look into enforcing. And obviously, that's a difficult proposition.
All right, is, um, is it recycling man, mandatory in Orange County?
Is it mandatory? I'm not sure about Orange County, but I know that... But I know that mandates have been successful, you know, across the country as far as increasing the recycling rate. I mean, really, if you think about it, fees and mandates, that's why recycling has been successful in general. I mean, the first recycling we probably remember is, you know, when we were little, you had the bottles and cans, you know, you see the five cent return on them. We used to return glass bottles, you know, of Coke and stuff like that. So, you know, that's really the first recycling that we were familiar with. And that was successful because of fees. And so, you know, the mandates worked.
Well, that was beneficial for the manufacturer to do. That same principle, not sure would apply to plastic. But, I mean, it was basically made to be thrown away, so kind of reversing osmosis here. Anyway, that's all the questions I have.
That's Ron, or Heidi, or Fred. Do we know anything about the legislation that was introduced this year to start allowing electronics back into landfills? Do we know if that's... Do you have anything you can you tell us on it? I know it was introduced.
We know, we're doing it. We have, we require the garbage folks that pick up our garbage to also pick up recyclables separately and run them down. And now that we'll pick up electronics, take them to the landfill.
Yeah, I know they reported to us at the board meeting that there was some legislation that will start allowing those electronics that, like on this list from 2011, that were not allowed, that they will start allowing those.
I understand that legislation was passed. I don't know whether the department has to propose some regulations, but apparently the theory was that there was not sufficient public safety, public health to require the separation. I do not believe it is, I think, I do not believe it's optional with the counties. I think if the regulations are promulgated, it's mandatory statewide not to require that separation.
And again, that's one item out of a list of, I'm not sure how many you have, but it's more than ten, which includes cans, bottles, and several other things, so...
Increase Person County Solid Waste user fee. So what is the fee now?
I don't have that information in front of me. I was actually just informed, I was presenting this yesterday, so...
I just wanted to know, we had a fee, so that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, there may not be, yeah.
All right, anybody got any questions, Jason? Ray, you got any kinda...
No, probably what I would do, I'll take these and I'll work with Heidi and keep you all up to date in everything we feel that we can get done. Maybe I'll add it to the agenda in August. And that's all we're asking for.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fred McClure. Incoming President of Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Well, I appreciate y'all having me today. One of the things that we did on this recycling, we got in touch with the Highway Patrol and the State Department of Transportation and asked them to enforce these Adopt a Highway, 'cause a lot of them to in memory of, and then they don't ever do nothing about that. So they're going back and they're going to reinforce that so that people who actually use those will have to police that part of the highway. All right, I really appreciate you being here and you inviting me to be here. Quite a crowd on a morning meeting. We don't usually have that kind of crowd on mornings. But evidently, y'all do. We thank you for, again, for having us. Fred McClure, as I said, I'm not here as a county commissioner. I'm here as a volunteer for the Motto Action Committee. This is a real novel idea you got up here about looking at yourself when you're speaking. I haven't ever done that before.
Put that up for you.
I imagine that will cut down on some of the time. But in 2002, Davidson County voted to put the motto, our country motto, "In God We Trust" on our governmental building. We also put it on the inside. Since then, there have been several counties, there have been several states, I mean, several cities that have done it as well. So far to date, we have thirty-five cities and forty-five counties that have agreed to put "In God We Trust" national motto on either their meeting rooms or their buildings. Some have put it just in the building, some have put it on the building, some have put it on two or three buildings. And we invite you to put it anywhere you want. We bear the cost. There is no cost to the county for doing this at all. We raise private donations to pay for the price of putting it up. You should have some illustrations of what it could look like in different locations that you could put it on. "In God We Trust" has been identified as our national motto. It has been that way since 1956, when Dwight Eisenhower declared it to be our national motto. In addition to that, it's on our money, as everybody knows. I guess everybody pays attention to what's on their money. It's also engraved above the entrance of the US Senate chamber, and it's also above the speaker's seat in the US House of Representatives. So it's not a novel idea. It is our national motto. We were challenged by the ACLU after a short period of time, and they lost. And then they appealed it, and they lost. And they took it to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court refused to hear it. It reaffirmed the fact that this is, does not violate the separation of church and state as the Supreme Court looks at it. Some people think that the separation of church and state is in the Constitution. Some say it's not. But it doesn't really make any difference here because the Supreme Court, the highest court in the land, has said that this is not a violation of the separation of church and state. It also indicated in that decision, it also indicated in that decision that this was not an attempt by any of the organizations that would display this to convert anybody to a particular religion. It did not advocate for a particular religion at all. And that has been established. And November the first, 2011, the House of Representatives reaffirmed the national motto. It's three hundred ninety-six to nine was the vote on that. A survey that was recently held, there's an organization out of California that's much bigger than ours that goes to different states. But they held a poll and found that eighty-seven percent of the Americans do support "In God We Trust." It's a national identity. One of the things that has come to pass lately, and y'all know, with Dallas and my hometown, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, where I was raised, a lot of stuff's going on. And we have gone a long way from what our forefathers established. This is an attempt to improve the patriotism in our country. And that's what this is for. So it's, like I say, it's legal. It doesn't cost you anything. I think there's, somebody mentioned that you folks are the leaders in your county. And you kind of set the direction for where your county's gonna be going. It is important, I think, throughout all the counties, that we establish the fact that we support the Constitution of the United States, that we support America as it is, the country that it is. And the "In God We Trust" national motto, by displaying that, we are saying essentially that. We support what America has already established. I would answer any questions. I would ask for your favorable vote so you can join the forty-five counties that have already voted to display this. And I might mention that there has been only one that I know of, and that was kind of in King as a city that was challenged. And the challenge didn't stand up there either. But there has not been any of the cities or counties that have had issues with displaying this at all. Because as I say, it has been approved by our government and our courts. You got any questions?
Fred, is your committee required to be like on the administration building or courthouse? I'm just thinking, right next door is our veterans park, and that would be a perfect place.
I don't think that, we have put them on the governmental buildings. We've put them on the buildings where the commissioners meet. I don't know that we've ever been asked to put it in a veterans park, so I can't answer that right off. A committee would have to meet and see. But generally, it's meant to go on the governmental buildings in some fashion to establish the fact that the government does support "In God We Trust." It does support the United States.
In your mission statement, it says, "To defend, promote, and assist in the awareness and furtherance of our US motto 'In God We Trust' on public buildings, structures, monuments, and the printed page to encourage our godly heritage and various other aspects." So it seems that the mission statement would include monuments.
You know, and I would not argue with that, but I have learned that I don't assume much of anything. When I speak for a committee, I'm gonna make real sure that that committee is speaking as a committee, and I'm not out there by myself.
Well, I would hope they wouldn't do the mission statement and not mean that they...
I don't know what they mean by other structures, whether they meant, I mean, that was prefaced by governmental stuff. I don't know whether they meant other governmental structures or other structures. I mean, you know, you put on the library, or I don't know how far the structure's definition would go. And I would need to make sure. That's a good question. And thank you for reading that, by the way.
Any more questions? Do I have a motion to add that to our buildings? So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Saying which building, or you're just saying we support it, we wanna do it?
We got it on the agenda.
The ones with the pictures on it.
I'm all for looking at the other one if it's possible.
Yeah, we could add it if that's possible. The fact is, you're putting it up on the other ones would...
So y'all are recommending doing it on all these buildings? Or y'all just showing us an example of one of the buildings?
We show you the example of where the motto might go, but you're free to put it on any of the buildings. The reason we put it on several buildings is 'cause, like up in Yancey County, I think they've got a real old courthouse, and they did not want to put it on their old courthouse. So they put it on another one. So that's the reason we show, you don't have to put it on all of them. You can put it on one, you can put it on all of them.
And y'all pay the bill.
But y'all still paying.
Y'all pay the bill. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I want to modify my motion to include the Person County Courthouse, Person County Office Building, and the Person County Board of Commissioners chambers. As pictured. And Veterans Park, if possible.
Any more discussion on that? Not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you again, I appreciate it. And it's a lovely drive up here, although it's two-lane.
You can help us with that if you would.
I'm old enough to remember driving on two-lane, by the way.
We working on that.
We appreciate any help you could give us on getting four, two more.
I have zero. I couldn't even get a light outside the governmental center from the transportation. DOT is something else.
Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Great to take y'all happy.
All right, Mr. Young, we need to talk about a resolution for 911.
I think this is my last time with the... What you have in front of you is a proposal by the staff here for a purchase of a 911 CAD system to replace the aging system that we have now. I have here Brett Rinn, our communications manager, who has been working on this for just about a year now. He and his staff, looking at the equipment that we have now, the equipment that we will need to carry us into the future, which they have looked at several type vendors and have chosen one, which you have in front of you, Sun Guard. And with that, he can answer detailed questions with that, should y'all have any. And with this, he's also pursued funding from the state for this purchase to bring us up to that. I kind of went over it real detailed, a little bit more detailed last meeting, but like I said, Mr. Rinn's here to answer your questions for the equipment that we have now, that we recommended.
Was this in the CIP?
No, we didn't put this in the CIP. The funding is actually covered under the 911 Restricted Funds, which Brett has available in his current budget.
And I have not heard anything since the, in the newspaper from the public notice, I have not heard anything from any other source during that time.
Brett, can you tell us what some of the big changes we're gonna have since 1996? I'm actually gonna deal with cell phones.
Yeah, and that's the biggest piece of it, the CAD system we have now. Of course, they do regular software... Regular software updates, mainly to maintain their system. But one big piece of this brings to us is next generation inside of CAD. So whereas currently, the telecommunicator would have to utilize the 911 phone and then transfer that data over to the CAD computer, now this is all integrated in that one piece. Along with that, it will streamline a lot of our communication with our surrounding partners in Durham and Orange County to transfer calls. So for instance, we have to request, which happens a lot, if we have to request the HAM fire department to come up. Currently, our staff has to call Durham 911 and say, hey, here's the address. Can we send HAM? Whereas with the new system we're looking at now, it's a button push away.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any more discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Go get it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jones? Russell Jones?
Good morning. I have this morning for you, the tax collector settlement. This is actually required to be presented in your July meeting. And basically shows what we've done for the year. I have a PowerPoint slide I'll be sharing with you. The tax collector settlement is not just the tax collector statement where the tax collector did. It's actually started off with appraisal department. Goes through the appraisal of property, to the assessing of the property, determining where the property is located within the city or county. And then goes, trickles down to the collector and the citizens. And we have a great group of citizens who always pay their tax bills. Ninety percent of people are gonna pay their tax bills before it even passed you. And then as we work through the link with collections, we end up with a pretty high collection rate. I'd like to share that with you this morning. First of all, we started off with a, I'm talking about the tax base rather than the collection side of it. Just show how good we did on guessing, estimating what the tax base would be. So we start off back in January, February with budget retrieved. Finally nailed the numbers down before y'all approved the budget. We thought we were gonna have an estimated base of 4.04 billion, ended up a base of 4.093. So we were 1.3% higher than we thought we would be, over about $53 million. This does not include the motor vehicles. The biggest thing on there is we don't get the state of race properties until this past year, until December. So we're estimating what those property values are gonna be way early in the game. You always want to be higher than you estimate it. That's a good budgeting process there. 1.3% over is about as close as we're ever gonna get.
You mean you want to be lower?
You want your base to be higher than you budget for your base to be. So you want to have, if your values come in higher than you thought they would come in, therefore, you will end up with extra money. There's always a good sign there. Same thing on the collection rate. We budgeted the collection rate at 97.25. And actually collected 98.82. This is the highest collection rate that Person County has enjoyed as far back as I can find. That went back in records over thirty years. We're at 98.82. This actually is higher than last year, which was, again, the highest rate we have ever experienced. We're 1.7% over where we thought we would be. And the reason to be conservative there is we are estimating this fourteen, sixteen months ahead of time. If a bankruptcy was to occur on large business or large tax bill, that collection rate would take a hit, and we would have no way to recover from that. So we want to be conservative on our levy and also on the collection rate. We ended up collecting $882,000 more than we thought we would. And that's because of both the levy being underestimated and the tax rate. And because we had a great year this year, our average collection rates continued to creep up. Average over the last ten years, just under 98%, 97.95. Of course, that leaves the bad side of it. We always have some that we did not collect. So overall, we left $341,000 on the table that we did not collect by June 30. It's kind of interesting to break that down into your real estate taxes owed and other taxes owed. Your real estate taxes owed are your most probable to collect. We have a lien on the real estate. on the real estate. The other uncollectible is a little more problematic. It could be taxes on a boat and no one else, but only anyone else in the county, and the boat has left the county. It could be any kind of personal property, untagged vehicles. Any land that's not tied to a real estate property is more difficult to collect than things tied to real estate. Land's always gonna be here. We did also collect it. In addition to that, some stormwater money, some of the links I'll go over towards the end. In order to get that collection rate, of course, we had to do some other things with this. Collect money for up to the county and for the city. And this here actually includes all money that came in through the door, not just your taxes. So overall, we collected just under $34 million this year. Person County, not counting the city stuff, just over $29 million. Thirty-seven thousand payments. And we collected $81,000 of prepayments. And prepayments are usually a combination of two different things. It's gonna be people who are doing refinancing or selling their property. And a lot of that's your senior citizens who own fixed income, and they are encouraged to make monthly payments ahead of time, in a lot of cases. So they're bringing this money every month, so that their tax bill comes out. They don't have this tremendous burden trying to find the money in three, four months. That does work well. That's a little bit lower this year than it was last year, but that's nothing along there. It's just less refinancing, that's what they announced too. And of course, we always talk about the current collection rate, but we don't need to forget about the old years. Last year, July 1st of 2015, we had just over a million dollars uncollected. And again, after working on that, we ended up with $600,000 unpaid on June 30th, 2016. So we collected $400,000 of the unpaid, $1 million. So we're always working on the old stuff, as we work on the current stuff also. In order to get that money collected, the ones who don't willingly pay, we have to go through some other unpleasant activities. We do attachments, garnishments, and some other methods. The attachments are where we actually ask the bank to take out a bank account and send us checks. We had 302 of those, gave us $164,000 for the county, $70,000 for the city. Garnishments is the one we normally go to first. Garnishments is less painful for the taxpayer. If we can find it where they're working, we ask the employer to send us 10% of their gross pay to go through the taxes. Again, 236,000 was collected there. They are sent a certified letter, giving timeframes to pay it. We don't just go directly to the bank or directly to them. We do give them fair notice, so they'll know they're supposed to, we're gonna get taxes taken care of. We also use cheats, NC cash. This is where people have either passed away or money's been unclaimed, they couldn't find them, so we go to the state and try to find money there at the treasurer's office. We got $5,000 there. And we've used debt set off since it started in 2003. And since it started, we collected over $1.3 million in debt set off. And we do that for all departments, not just for the tax office. Debt set off requires one person to be responsible for all the debt set off payments that goes through the tax office. We collect $54,000 for the tax office, $31,000 EMA's, and then some of health and library also. It's only about $87,000 that's here collected through debt set off. Debt set off also goes against your tax refund and against any lottery winnings if you win over $600. So we've got some lottery winnings also there. So that leaves us at the end of the year, June 30, we have $938,000 uncollected, which is less than we ended up with last year uncollected. So we have less due to us now than we had last year at the same time. About 700, 800 bills. You can see that still, most of that's tied to real estate, which, like we mentioned, is a good thing. We still have quite a bit of unpaid vehicles that are now three or more years old, and we continue to collect on those. And then $59,000 for other items like untagged vehicles, boats, skis, airplanes, all that fun stuff. And this is probably my favorite slide. This is what happens after 11 years. So after 11 years, we write off the taxes, we can't collect it, statute of limitations is gone. So in 2005, we started off with $23 million due to the county. We collected all but $12,500 of that. Most of that still is in real estate, got 42 parcels. A lot of that sits your problematic properties, little loose strips, low-value properties, some air properties that are very difficult to research, some things we can't even locate. After 10 years, uncollected taxes, all the effort we put into everything to collect, we end up with five one-hundredths of 1% of them could not have all. And that's because we stay after those old years just as hard as we do the current collection year. So five one-hundredths of 1% is what we have to write off out of $23 million. We wrote off $12,558. That's my favorite slide there. Motor vehicles, I have to be remiss if I don't mention that also. Motor vehicles, as we all remember, 2013, they started collecting the DMV. Tax office does everything but the final payment of motor vehicle. So we're still not out of the motor vehicle game. We do all the evaluations, all the sit-icing, all the adjustments. If there's a high mileage or wrecked vehicle, damaged vehicle comes to us. So 337 million is the value of those vehicles. We end up collecting all but $3,900 of those taxes, and you wonder why do we collect 100%? Because it's supposed to have been 100% programmed. What happens? You end up with a few bad checks, which DMV can block all registration services in many states because they wrote a bad check to North Carolina. So that will eventually be collected. And some of the people who bought the paper tag for 90 days and totaled the vehicle before they even, 90 days was up. So some of those are difficult to collect. End up with a 99.83 collection rate on those vehicles. I don't think you're gonna get much better than that. And then, of course, stormwater is the other little thing we work on. Stormwater's gonna be a little bit lower than your normal real estate because it's exempt properties involved. We're collecting stormwater fees on cemeteries. And it's kinda hard to collect from a cemetery. We do have quite a few that do get paid. But some of them I have not been able to find a place to even send them bill to, as you can imagine. So it's always gonna be a little lower there, but still, 97.2 is a great collection rate on stormwater. And we do work on those on old years also, like we have on others. That's up a little bit from last year, it was 96.78. So there's my collection report. If you have any questions, I do need a motion to accept your report, your proof of the numbers.
If you, that first slide, you had 324,000 of real estate not collected.
Yes, sir.
That would be a tax lien applied towards that?
Yes, we actually have an automatic lien on all real estate. So there's automatic lien regardless of...
So that 300,000 part of the 983,000 total, uncollected, so forth?
Yes, sir. That is actually included in those numbers. And that, of the, once the tax bill is one year past due, so we left that amount of money on the table last year, we'll collect about 55% of that in the next 12 months. Even though it's that much money left right now, 55% of that historically will be collected in the next 12 months.
Plus interest and penalty.
Yes, sir. All these interest and penalties as prescribed by law, so that's, it adds up. But as I say, a lien on real estate, you can't sell the, with clear title, you can't refinance. We're always looking for other ways to collect. A lot of these making payments, that's just showing the outstanding balance. A lot of payments coming in every day on those.
I'd like to commend Mr. Jones for his collection percentage. If I'm not mistaken, it's the second highest in this state.
In our population group, yes, sir. That would be, that would be correct.
Which...
If I go with the Grand County, do they collect for Creedmoor and Oxford and STEM? Or do they collect their own?
I'm not certain, but I am all but certain that Grand County collects for all the municipalities in the district and their stormwater fees.
So is that pretty, is that pretty the norm?
That is the norm. There are a couple of city collectors out there, but there are very few of them. The taxpayers, I feel, I've never seen the other side of it, but they wanna make, they wanna pay one bill one time, one place. It causes all kinds of problems when you have different places to pay. It doubles up your postage expense, it doubles up your staff, and you got the paralegal who are trying to do real estate closures, trying to research title just two different places. We go on to paycheck, the city has to do the same thing. Almost every county out there is gonna look at the cities.
Do you know if those municipalities, do they contract with the counties to do it, or the counties just do it for free, or what?
As in Person County with Roxboro, they all contract. There is a collection rate, a collection fee that we charge. In Person County, it's 1.5%. 1.5% was the rate that was established by law to do motor vehicles. We were required by law to collect motor vehicle taxes for the city at 1.5%. We started collecting for the city in 1997. We adopted the same 1.5% and stayed the same since.
Well, thank you. Thank you, and your staff?
Definitely my staff. They're the ones that are there every day doing all the frontline work. And it's not my collecting settlement, it's what my staff did. They did a great job this year.
All right.
Most to approve.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
My next item is pretty short. In order to have the collection rate we had, you must order the collector and the staff to collect the taxes. So this is a simple order, say in 2006 through 2016, taxes are out there. Police are collecting. I'll bring you back a report. Next July looks as pretty as this one does.
All right. Have a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Mr. John Hill?
Well, John's coming up. I wanted to introduce this item for him. We're bringing a discussion of the irrigation system for the athletic complex. And right now, the plan has been that while the seasons are sort of off-season in the middle of summer and fall, we have approximately, just shy of $8,000, of $8,000 budgeted for the current irrigation system, which is a fairly minimal but effective way to irrigate the fields. But Chairman Noel had asked us to look at some other options. And so we're bringing forward a couple of different options if you'd like to consider upgrading the irrigation system. And we have priced those out. We've received some cost proposals and have the additional costs. And we can talk about where we might come up with the funding, if you'd like to do something above and beyond what we're currently planning. So...
All right. The reason I asked for this is because if we're gonna have a park that we want to make sure people appreciate and use, the main reason is, if we're gonna spend money out there on grass, we better be prepared to keep. So that's what I asked John to come back with, with some options. He's got a golden goose, and he's also got some alternatives, I hope.
So, good morning, everyone. Just wanted, on your agenda abstract, I've kinda laid it out, which you've got your options. First and foremost, I wanna say that it was a very, very successful season. I think that a great deal of the public really enjoyed it, and we had a lot of satisfied customers, and we had a lot of visitors to come to actually see the park, too. So the original plan was to get through the season, and we've already, we've already got a contract in place to go ahead, get through the season, and the company's gonna come back and actually sow Bermuda in the outfield. Because to get through the season, we actually resotted, and we sowed everything with hybrid rye, so that it would be nice and pretty, and it would be playable for the spring season. Now that the season's over, the hybrid rye's starting to die back, and we're actually helping that to die back by, you know, putting more nitrogen on it and trying to burn it out while we bring the Bermuda up. So the original plan is in place right now. The company is kinda giving us a timeline that would best fit us to come back and sow common Bermuda. Another option that we looked at, to bring the facility up to, I guess, a step above what it would be, would be your Cadillac system, I guess you'd say. And that would be to go in and have a fully automated sprinkler system, and as well, go in, instead of sowing seeded common Bermuda, we would go in and sprig Bermuda 419, which is what is on the infills right now. That's your professional grade of grass. So you have that option as well in front of you. And then you also have the option of going back and sprigging the Bermuda 419. And instead of using it, going with a fully automated sprinkling system, one of the things that I was asked to go research was water wheels. If you've ever seen those, a lot of farmers use irrigation water wheels, and a lot of multi-purpose complexes use them. It is a cheaper option.
All right. Now, how much difference is the, well, I guess the main question is that, would that be sufficient for right now?
The water wheels, as long as, as long as we've got the pressure, they would be sufficient if you wanted to just, you're still gonna have to have manpower to do it versus an automated system to where you could possibly do it with your, you know, with a cellphone or something like that. We still have to have the staff there to actually go out and rotate the water wheels and hook them up and maintain them, which, you know, currently, we do, we have staff right now pulling hoses and irrigation sprinklers currently.
How many hours per week are y'all pulling the hoses out and watering? And how many people are doing it?
Right now, we've, we've got budgeted, and it's worked well for us. We have two part-time positions at 1,000 hours each per season. But when we split that up, we're able to work about four people. So it's a total of 2,000 hours at $10 an hour. But per, a lot of this depends also on what the weather's gonna be like, too. So for example, if we get stretches of where we don't have rain, of course, we have to get out there and pull the sprinklers and hoses and stuff. Typically, what we're after is you're, when you grow grass, especially this grade of grass, you're looking at typically one inch per week of rain or irrigation, if that makes any sense. So, you know, you can kinda gate, and I can give you an idea of how long that takes to do that per each field. So if you were gonna hand-water one infield, it would take you two hours, if you were gonna hand-water it. And this is with one-inch line. This is not just a regular hose. This is a full-blown one-inch water line. It takes two hours, one employee. So that's roughly two hours of actually spraying water. That's actually an hour of actually pulling the hoses. So multiply that times four, and then you've got a full day of paying somebody $10 an hour to water a field. Best-case scenario, what, best-case scenario, you're in seasons like right now. We're getting rain every afternoon, and, you know, that helps us to cut back on the manpower. But, you know, we can't, you can't bank on that, you can't bank on that good weather like we're having every, every season. So, you know, the common Bermuda as well, regardless, I think our plan is we are going to purchase some type of irrigation water wheel, whether we get a irrigation system or not. But it's kinda like, depends on what level you want your facility to be. When you have a fully automatic irrigation system, you can be very precise in what you're, in your watering. Because one thing that, one of the problems that happens is when you manually water something, is you can, you can actually water it too much. That causes you to spend more money on water. Also causes, it stunts the growth of your grass. So, you know, to be very precise with your watering, you would have to go with the fully automatic system.
If you did, if you did the fully automatic system, is that the one you've got in here for $115,000?
Correct.
Now, if you did that, and you did it precise, where you, where's that money? Where are we looking for that? Are you taking, I don't know how much kinda income you had out there. I know you doing, did quite well this year, but, you know, where are we at with the budget part of this? Or maybe I'm getting ahead.
Well, I thought they said we had some overage, something dealing with the parking lot at high school, so we had some money that we were looking at using right now.
No, you've already taken that money.
They spent that for the technology for school.
We move that to the schools.
So the options that I put in here that I was kinda looking for is, I know that some CIP projects were mentioned, so I just went ahead and put that in there, that if some CIP projects came under, then you, you know, you might wanna use some of that money. Another option would be, if you do get granted part half this year, to use some of that money that you get back in August. So that's a big chunk of change that you could put back towards this program as well. Another option that I put in here is that we, we also are gonna hit the sponsorship pretty hard. I know that TDA has another allotment coming to the complex, and we did carry forward some money from a donation to the Sportsplex. So roughly, in this fiscal year, you may be starting yourself out with about $30,000. But I'd have to go back and check that number. So it all depends on what the timeline of this. So if you'll take a look at the timeline, it gives you a little bit of the time. We don't wanna start this project now, because we'd kinda be shooting ourselves in the foot if we, if we go ahead and tear up the fields, and then we can't capitalize on the revenue of the fall season. So what we would do is, we would go ahead and we would overseed again, come around September, in hybrid, hybrid rye. And that's what's on it right now. So if you've been out there, and we told you that the rye grass is gonna die, the reason it hasn't died is because it's a hard hybrid, which this coming fall, we would, we would sow the same... Which, this coming fall, we would, we would sow the same thing. It would become up nice and hardy by the, by the first of October. You would play your season, after your season, roughly, second week of November, we would actually come through and we would overseed it one more time to get it ready for the spring season. You play your spring season, and then we totally shut everything down again. We're ahead of the ballgame this year than we were this past year. And the reason why is, we were trying to get everything established to get the season started by April 1. But the weather didn't cooperate with us, so it pushed us back all the way to May 1. So, now, what's gonna happen, and we ended up, we ended up playing that season very, very late. So, that put us behind the eight ball as well. This year, you'll be able to start your season early April, maybe even, maybe even at the end of March. And you will be done by the end of May. So, that's when the prime growing season is. So, your project would start, your sowing project would start at the end of May. Now, if you choose to do your irrigation system, you're fully irrigated, we would do that in January. Roughly, December, January, and moving into February.
So, you're moving all your sports up, how's that gonna affect your other sports? So, I mean, you got, what's, what's, what comes after basketball? Basketball ends when?
Well, it won't affect basketball. Basketball's gonna end roughly, and before March, right there in March.
That's what I'm saying, you know, you get the same kids, you're hoping to play basketball, play baseball, so you don't want to run into your leagues. Other question I had, too, I saw in here where we were talking about replanting the trenched areas. And so, someone actually at the barber shop asked me, said, "Why don't we sow grass in the baseline? Why don't we cut that part out, have that part dirt like at the high school?"
There's two, there's two reasons for the grass in the baselines. One reason is, that's one of the more modern trends, to have grass in your baselines. A lot of college fields are going to it. And, and, and the reason for that is the wear and tear. There's less maintenance to it, so you're, you're paying, you're paying people less to maintain that strip through there. You get more playability. And the, ultimately, for me, the main thing was, the Sportsplex having to grade that area so fine, because it was, you know, there was some, some erosion issues, that, that slows your water down, and you don't have as much erosion. So, it's more playability, less erosion. But, you know, down the road, we are, we will be, there's a survey out now, so we will be asking people, you know, how they like to play on it. You know, if, if some fields need to be changed up. And that's just a matter of moving your sod. You know, you come cut the sod up, and you set it in different sections. But right now, you've got really good, mature, germinated sod, and you don't have-
So, if I had a cost comparison, it's cheaper just to re-sod or reseed it every year than it is to get somebody to rake it out and add dirt to it if it's starting to rot, or what?
Can I say that one more time?
Cost comparison. So, it's cheaper just to go ahead and re-sod it and reseed it every year, because it's being trenched out anyway, than have someone just maintain it?
Well, you won't even have to trench it out. If, if the sod, I mean, if Bermuda is healthy, which it is now, which during the season, they were playing on rye. They were playing on really tender Bermuda grass, but it was overseeded heavy with rye. So, now that the Bermuda's coming in, you know, they couldn't run on-
Wear as much.
Yeah, they couldn't wear it out. And that's what we're after. We're after something very healthy, that's gonna get tons of play on it. You know, just for the fact that, the more people you get on it, of course, the more revenue you can, you can make.
Remotely.
Right now, the mower that we bought was a Zero Turn. It's a Z-920, 930. And what we did was, John Deere, we, we kicked it around about the real mower, and then we kicked it around with, you know, the new Zero Turns. Regardless of what you cut it with, the, the main thing is that you cut it with sharp blades, and that you cut it at one to 1.5 inches, you know, up constantly. So, what we did was, John Deere actually took that mower and kind of modified our deck, so that our deck could actually get down that low. So, right now, we're cutting it at, while we're in the growing season, we're, we're cutting it at probably one, 1.75, something like that, just to get it up. And then, coming closer to the fall, we'll bring it back down to, you know, 1.1.5, 1.2. And then, by the time we play on it, then we'll try to get down back down to one inch.
All right, now, one thing that you might want to touch base with the landscaping people is how low to cut it in the winter time, because if that field holds moisture, you're gonna get a lot of winter kill.
Yeah.
So, sometimes, keeping it longer helps, but for the most part, you either got it, or you don't have it.
And that was one of the things that, so we go back to the grass. The, the fields have been graded so well now, even when you get tremendous amounts of water, no, no field's holding water now. So, everything's shedding off really, really good. So, we're hoping that, you know, coming into the fall season, that everything gets really heavily seeded with that hybrid rye before we can come back and put Bermuda in next summer. And that will help to insulate the grass as well, and you can start back off your season earlier and greener. But that's, that's kind of a, you know, I could talk all day about this. It's fun to talk about stuff you play on, I mean.
Have you heard from the grant? Have you heard from the grant?
They, they actually contacted me a week ago, and I had an opportunity to add some more verbiage to the justification letter. And so, they actually were contacting a number of applicants to say, hey, we're, you know, we're gonna give you an opportunity to add some more verbiage in there. So, I've been working with them, we, we kind of beefed up our letter again, and then that is going to the board trustees now.
So, your timeline- What's your confidence level? What's your confidence level that it'll go through?
I'm, I'm about, I'm probably about 90% confident. I mean, I, I don't want to say I'm 100% confident, but-
Right.
We, and I don't want to jinx myself.
How much money are we talking about there?
Talking about 251,000. We would have, we would have, we would have written it for more than that, but I wasn't confident on the, the justifying, the pre-spending. So, basically, you're getting, you'll be, hopefully, you'll be getting a reimbursement for your purchase, you know, for a percentage of your purchase. But some of those capital spendings didn't qualify. So, I didn't want to submit it that way, and, you know, get, get dinged on that. So, that's why it's 251.
And that's the water, when?
Should be August.
So, based off your timeline, putting in in November, you know, hearing back from that, and then making a decision, we're pretty good on time?
Yeah, and that's why we, that's why we did that timeline, so that you could actually hear from your grant. And if you decide to use your grant, fine. And it also gives us time to go ahead and get some sponsorship, you know, because you never know, somebody might want to be another field sponsor or something, throw you another 10,000. So, that's kind of why we did that timeline. Plus, we didn't want to, we didn't want to hurt our fall season, and your spring season. We wanted to capitalize on those kids playing. We're already taking registrations, and the registrations already look really good.
All right, well, we don't need to take in mo, in motion right now-
Correct.
Till we find out what we get.
Correct. This is just for a-
Planning purposes.
All righty. Anybody got any other questions for Mr. Hill? If not, we appreciate your time.
Thanks.
All right. Heidi?
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. I'm following up on the direction that you gave me earlier this year, which was to pursue the opportunity to issue a request for proposals to administer the county's health and medical insurance plan. So, since my time and prior to that, Person County has never actually gone out for bid, or, you know, created the opportunity for insurance brokers to come bid on having our self-funded health insurance. This is not a reflection of dissatisfaction, it's just wanting to make sure that we're getting, you know, a competitive administrator who, you know, offers benefits to our employees that are, are, you know, competitive within the market. So, I put together with the help of staff, a draft request for proposals, which we would like to issue on August 1st, and it would remain active for 30 days. Then, any brokerage firms out there would have the opportunity to submit a bid. We're not asking for them to submit costs on what our health insurance would be. Rather, it would be the cost of having an administrator of our plan. So, much like Thompson Allen has done for us, you know, where we're paying a percentage to them to oversee and administer the plan, that's what we would be looking for through this RFP process. So, we would have about 30 days, looking for feedback to make sure that this request for proposals meets the expectations that you had. And then, I want to also talk to you about the process that we would employ to make a decision on the administrator of the plan.
Question on insurance, not on the brokerage.
Uh-huh.
So, I've had some employees come, and when we're looking at this, are we looking at the providers that we have in Person County that they may be already seeing? That when we switch like this, that they lose that provider?
Can you give me more specific?
So, for instance, they may be going to Dr. Clayton, and he's now, he's now not in the, in the, the list, or the providers with our new insurance, so then they gotta go see doctor per year.
And-
You know what I mean?
That's a nice word.
Are we looking at that when we, when we look at it? Are we strictly looking at a cost?
So, those decisions in terms of which offices are within a network is a decision of the carrier. So, that would be either a Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or Coventry, or Aetna. Those companies are the ones who are determining-
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, are we looking at those carriers? So, when we are at Blue Cross, Blue Shield- And we see that 70% of our physicians here in the county are with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and then we switch to something else, and then we go down to 30%.
I got you.
But we, we don't look at that?
We do look at that in terms of when we're actually soliciting plans and proposals from the providers. That is one of the considerations that we do look at, yes. But in terms of the stage that we're at right now, when we're talking about the broker, that doesn't come into play.
No, no, this is not the subject of the broker. I'll just, that question came to me, I was on accident.
Yes, we do. We do look at that, yes. Yes.
What we're basically looking for more than anything else is who's gonna manage to put the lease in.
No, I understand this. I was gonna ask that question in comments, but-
I got you.
Since we were discussing insurance, I said I asked.
Yeah. And if there are issues that employees are having where their provider is out of network, I'd encourage them to contact our HR department, who could follow up with our brokers. And oftentimes, we're able to adjust that and, and make some changes there. So, if you're hearing that, please encourage them to contact HR.
All right. The RFP-
Yes.
I haven't read through the whole thing. But are we, we're making sure that we're putting the RFP out here, apples for apples, and not just an RFP for cost evaluation? So, they'll specifically have to address the healthcare, along with the cost, along with the services that they provide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we're, we're really looking for a comprehensive broker who's able to provide wellness, able to conduct open enrollment, you know, the whole gamut of services that we require, which is more than just going out to the insurance market and soliciting bids. That's one small piece of what we need.
Got you.
And we do have all of that laid out in here, in terms of what they would have to be responding with, and letting us know what services they could provide.
Thank you.
I also wanted to follow up. Vice Chairman Kendrick, you had asked if it might be possible for the county to consider bringing the brokerage service in-house, and employing a staff person who could go out to the market for us. And previously, when we were fully insured, instead of the self, self-insured that we are now, that would require just going out to market and soliciting bids. But because we're now a self-funded health insurance, we also have to have an actuary who, you know, that's a complicated sort of scientific process. We have to have somebody employed who can administer the Affordable Care Act for us. And so, as I was calling other counties to talk with them about how they go about this process, all of them, and the insurance companies, have told me that bringing it in-house is, is just simply not feasible, because you need so many players now. It's not just a broker that you have in place. And, and we have found that to be the case with Scott Benefit Services that we use now. We have about five or six people who actually administer the self-funded health insurance, not, not just the brokerage piece. So, we didn't feel like that would be feasible. Rather, we would have, you know, a team of players, and, and one of these other, you know, more comprehensive brokerage firms would, would be what we would be looking for in that process. So, I did need some feedback on the process. I wasn't sure if the board wanted to, if we received 10 proposals, if you wanted to entertain those yourself and hear from those brokers, you know, directly, or if you would be comfortable having staff evaluate those, and bringing maybe their top three choices to the board? Or I could have, you know, two commissioners join us on a committee and make a decision to bring a final recommendation back to the board? So, kind of three different options, depending on how much involvement the board would like to have in this process.
I personally don't see why we need to see all 10. I, I would be more inclined to see the top three and make a decision off of those from staff recommendations.
So, have the top three come back and do sort of a dog and pony show of their services to the board?
I'll work with me. Like, I've advocated that we look at this, and-
Yeah.
I would be willing to make a motion that we move forward with the request, and bring the top three back to us.
All right.
Yeah, just like he said.
Top three being based on what?
Services provided and cost.
We'll that, we'll have staff evaluate based on the proposals submitted. And we'll have, you know, a, a long list of criteria that we'll evaluate them on. And then, we'll bring back the three most competitive proposals that we've received. And I can meet with you individually to go over all of them, if you would like to outline.
All right. I didn't want it to just be a closed loop, if nothing else. Let Jimmy and myself be advisors, or whatever, since it's his proposal. I'm sure I'm gonna hear about it anyway, but to keep everybody in the loop as much as possible.
Okay.
All right. We got a motion on the floor? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Designation for voting delegates at North Carolina County Commissioners? I thought we did that last time.
That was NACO.
That was the National Conference.
Annual conference. I know, I made Jimmy Clayton have the motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Do we need an alternate?
I don't think you have to list one, but I'll be there. I could sign up as a county, if he's there.
Okay. All right. One of the add-ons to the agenda, discussion for the revolving loan fund. We have an application, but we have no money. And we need to decide what direction we want to continue going on. So, the floor is open for discussions and suggestions.
I'm sending around the revolving loan fund program that has been in place for quite a while. I'm not sure that it even has a date on it. And I can direct you to Section 3, which you'll find on Page 3, which says that, you know, no loan may be approved unless sufficient funds exist in the revolving loan fund at the time of approval to cover the entire amount of the loan. So, I would need for the board to, if you-
Sign approval. We had an approver, right?
No.
So, if we decide, before you, if the recommendation is to approve, then we can transfer money at that time, correct?
You could. Yes, you could. But I don't know whether or not to consider the application unless the board is willing to appropriate-
Let me ask one question. Mr. Attorney, I think Mr. Pereira addressed this in a note that I saw from him. But this, under all of the new rules and regulations about incentives and things, we are on solid ground even having a revolving loan fund, aren't we?
Yes, sir, I think you are.
Well, I advocated to rate this fund for our volunteer fire departments, but, you know, I felt like when I suggested that, that we still were keeping this in place, and that we could put money there as needed, or if we were having applicants. Because, you know, for a long, long time, we headed to where, you know, we just didn't have any, anyone apply. But I don't, I don't feel like faulting someone who's, who's applying now, just because, you know, technically having the funds in that, in that program.
Sure.
I can't remember a time that we didn't raid this fund. I mean, it was always a-
I mean, it, it was always a last resort, and we simply didn't have any applicants. We never had an applicant. Now, we do. We got our hands stuck in the cookie jar. And I don't think we need to penalize the small business owner for not having the funds available. Our decision that we made that may have been premature on that. So, I'd be in favor of, now, if we wanna talk about, if we wanna keep this program or not keep the program, I think that's a discussion to be had after we go through this application process. We, I know in discussion with you that this application process was a very lengthy process for the, um, for the applicant, and I can certainly understand that. And I, and I did wanna ask the county attorney, did he have a chance to research whether the, uh, federal regulations applied to us at all on a level, as opposed to deposit institutions?
I am not at all certain that I understand, and the question is, tell me again, any questions?
The question is, under, let's say, Reg B, uh, Regulation B under the Fair Lending Act, if a person, if we have an application, we have a program, if someone applies for that application, we owe it to the applicant to review the process, not to simply, no, we're not going to entertain anything. I didn't know if we had the authority, that blunt authority to say, no, we're just not going to, um, review that application.
I will do some additional research, but I do not think we are subject to, to federal regulations, but subject only to the state authority for economic development and services.
Yeah, I just know when you get into lending money, you know, we have to watch redlining, you know, across the board and...
I think you would have to make sure that the criterion that you use to determine whether or not to grant the loan is a non-discriminatory approach. You'd have to have valid reasons for approving a loans that would be applied uniformly to whomever else applied. Have to be careful about that, that it's not a discriminatory application of the process.
I'd like to say that my view was different than Ray's when we voted to take the money out and give it to the fire departments. An old, complete oversight on my part and misunderstanding was that the fund was no longer viable. So, when I voted to help the fire departments, I made the assumption that the fund would no longer be in place. And, uh, I guess we should've clarified that and either voted to keep it in existence or to do away with it at that, at that time, so everybody would've been clear on it. The loan amount that they're asking for would have to be covered, I think it reads somewhere in here, that we have to have, they can only borrow up to forty percent of the loan value?
You can find that on page eight, section nine. So, you would, if you want to follow this program, which it's at the discretion of the board, obviously.
We didn't get a page eight.
Oh.
We got three pages.
There's a lot of extras here, but I'm assuming it's the same thing.
Okay.
Is yours printed front and back?
Mm-mm. It's front and back, but only, we got a table of contents on the...
It is in your packet. Let me pull up, in the Dropbox, it's...
So...
It's a separate file in the Dropbox, I believe. You could direct them to that, Brenda.
Go back to where the packets are.
If you go into Dropbox, it's a separate file folder, similar to packets. It's not under packets, but it's a file folder named Revolving Fund.
To continue on with my thoughts, um, we're also saying that the people making application can only get forty percent of what's in it, and right now, zero's in it, so they could get forty percent of zero. So, moving forward, I'd like for us to put it on the agenda to, to either do away with the revolving loan fund or to fund it to a sufficient amount so that we are all on the same playing field. The other thing is, we've got, uh, the possibility of going through a loan process and, and I don't know exactly what a loan process does because I'm not in that business, but it, it could be found that the person is, is a high risk, and you've gone through the whole process, you've allotted a certain amount of money to go into the program, and then you find out for some reason that the person may be high-risk, and, and you've done all of these things to, uh, to no avail. So, um, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, that before we decide on whether or not we're gonna go through the process, we need to make the decision on whether the revolving loan fund is viable or not prior to voting on whether or not we're gonna approve an application.
Is the forty percent language, is that some required by general statute when this was formed, or this is our language?
This is the board's language, and it says the maximum amount of any one loan shall be no more than forty percent of all money then available in the phone at the time of appro, fund at the time of appropriation.
At the time, I was on the board the last loan was made, I think, and there was Hurdle Mills Meat Market, if I'm not mistaken. They borrowed the money out there and paid the money back very early, like in half of the time that they were supposed to. So, they paid the loan back off early. I think the thoughts of the board at that time was to try to promote small businesses like that. That was the reason for the revolving loan fund in the very beginning.
I think we...
You've got a couple things that need to be adjusted here. The interest rate is supposed to be fifty percent of prime, which, uh, we're basically paying them to take it.
At that time?
I'd want some of that.
At the time that this was written, that wasn't the case.
I understand that, but that's something that needs to be updated.
Right.
That was, that was gonna be my suggestion.
Otherwise, we'll have a room full of applicants.
I don't think we need to, uh, get rid of the program, but obviously, we might need some, need some updating.
I mean, you looked at one and a half percent, that would be the interest rate. So, I'm not, I'm not saying that it couldn't, shouldn't be adjusted. I mean, this is, I mean, this is a older document, this is before the, the Great Recession. I mean, a lot of things have changed.
Now, I, I do, uh, I'm gonna say agree with Kyle, you tell me if I, if I've got it wrong now, but this applicant applied based off of what we have here. So, I don't know if you go to change the stuff before you review his application. I mean, you know, maybe he's the last one to get it like this, but then we start updating. But I think it's hard pressed to, to change this, this document or this process when you already have an applicant based off of your current one.
Is that even legal?
I think you have to honor the program that you, he applied under.
I would think so.
And after that, we change the rate, we modify everything, but we have to honor what the original guidelines were of what he applied for.
Well, if you're gonna stick to the letter of the law, then if you go honor what this is saying, we don't have any money in here, so we don't have any loan under this program. So, you're gonna adjust it after the applicant on a technicality, but you're gonna have to break your technicalities to get this loan processed.
Well, let's go to, uh, was he, was he aware that fifty thousand dollars was not in there?
Yes.
He was told that there was nothing in the fund?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna go back and look at the tape the day we took that money from volunteer fire departments, 'cause I don't think we say we're gonna do away with this program. I thought we were saying that we would put money there if we had someone to apply.
That was my understanding, but I may have been misunderstanding. And I'm, my understanding was that we were moving the money, but that we were not closing the program because we had, nobody had applied for the money, so we were sitting there doing, just taking up budget space.
We wanna table this next month?
Well, he is under quite a deadline, um, so he is obviously interested in us moving forward with this as quickly as possible.
What is the review process? When, when will you have the application reviewed to know if it's approved?
Um, the, I'm working with Roxboro Savings Bank, and they will have something to me in the next week or so, which would be their recommendation on whether or not to...
So, prior to our next meeting?
But we have to have a public hearing, we have to run two notices with a recommendation of whether or not we're funding it and the amount before, you know, the board can consider...
Before it's said and done, we would have a meeting to transfer fifty thousand dollars to if we need to?
Well, if you follow the technicality, you gotta put about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in.
Huh? It's also up to forty percent?
Is the maximum.
Is the maximum.
So...
Yes, you could do that.
Where Tracy's coming from today is, well, I was, I mean, if you wanna have the, have the program, not have the program, that needs a decision because we have to set the public hearing for them. You gotta pay five hundred dollars, that's what the fee was, right? Five hundred dollars for the loan processor, Roxboro Savings?
No charge from them.
No cha, okay, well, that's, that's even better. So, but I think we need to have some guidance as to what we're gonna do here. Are we keeping the program? And to Tracy's point, there's no money in there now. Where does the money come from?
Fund balance, I mean, it's not like we're, uh, we're just giving it away. I mean, he's gotta be paid back.
Should get it back, you're hugged of it.
And also, I, I mean...
Is this gonna be a secured loan or unsecured?
Unsecured.
Thought it said in here that property...
He has to put up some collateral.
That's right.
So, it is secured?
It's unsecured.
Okay.
That's basically a second loop?
Right.
Yes. Yes.
Now, I, I don't know what the feeling of this board is about keeping the whole thing. I don't have a problem with going through this process with him since he's already made the application. And if you wanna do away with this loan program with all the other incentive things that are out there, I don't have a problem with that, but I feel like that we need to follow through with this, just like you said.
Well, as far as the program, I just feel like we're gonna allow the big boys to come in here and ask for some of, uh, the county's money to, to, to bring up into the county, and why wouldn't we do the same for some small businesses to help them out?
Well, that's what the whole idea was when it was created.
So, enough people pounding on the small man. First candidate, don't be one.
Move on. Move forward. Motion to allocate one hundred thousand dollars from fund balance to be, to put into the revolving loan fund and to proceed with a public hearing for the application and allow Roxboro Savings instruct, well, direct the county manager to proceed with, um, the loan processing through the agreement with Roxboro Savings. Under the current contract, under the current program.
Everybody understand the motion?
Mr. Attorney, you got any comment?
I think you're authorized to do what the motion proposes you to do. Uh, you'd obviously make sure that all i's were dotted and t's crossed throughout the process to make it, make sure that it's a non-discriminatory approach.
All right. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Manager, if you would, proceed.
Thank you.
All right. We've got one other item here. Discussion for a market study to be done by YMCA. Ray and I met with YMCA up in Dambler, and they've got a very nice facility up there. I was not aware that they would take them over and run them, which is one of the intriguing parts of it. If we build it, they'll, if they, they require this study to be done just to see if it is feasible. This does not necessarily take the place of the senior center, but they don't wanna be in competition with the senior center. And I think for our standpoint, we don't wanna spend, but we don't wanna build one building if we can make it suffice for both places, but, uh, the floor is open for discussion. Ray, you got anything you want to...
Just to add, uh, some history to it, if you look at Currituck County, they partnered with the Hampton Roads Y, and they housed a senior center, the YMCA, Parks and Rec, a rehab facility from their local hospital, and maybe one other facility. But it's a, it's a model that could work, and, uh, this is just the first step to seeing if it's viable here in Person County.
All right, now, so, how to buy, everybody understands this study would cost twenty-four thousand dollars and take approximately three months to go through.
Ms. Chairman? Could we look at this? I, we have a closed session coming up, and I, what are, are we looking at some proposals in the closed session that we needed to talk about before we look at this market study? Are we okay? Where are we at with this?
Well, it's just, um, as it stands right now, it's just an original idea. It's gone no further than, than that. So, it's just an option that we need to consider. And to your point, it would probably be better for us to discuss some of the other things first, uh, just to see where they might line up priority-wise.
Well, could I make a suggestion that we pick this up after we come back out of the closed session, see where it's at at that point?
I think that would probably be appropriate, yes. All right. So, we'll just talk about it after a while. All right. For the chairman's report, I don't have anything to report at this time. Uh, the manager?
Remind you that the Economic Development Commission is meeting this Thursday morning for their regular scheduled meeting, and I'm taking a vacation this week, so you all can reach me other ways than in the office.
Vacation.
I know. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any commissioners getting anything they wanna talk about?
I do. Go ahead.
This is very, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, go right ahead.
Go ahead. Ms. Clayton, you got the floor?
I, I wanna mention a topic that everybody loves to talk about, is the Upper New River Basin and the stormwater, and, uh, I think everybody's about wore out with it. But me and Commissioner Newell met with, uh, down at Brooks's, but they tried to build some storage units down there, and they ran into a pretty good problem with the stormwater stuff, and I just wanna point out that we're gonna have a discussion about that on the agenda at the next board meeting. And, uh, so, I just wanna remind you of that. But that's, when commercials start, when you start doing commercial stuff, it starts getting expensive with this stormwater stuff. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the Upper New River Basin Association made a proposal to the Division of Environmental Management that land that was put in conservancy type stuff, and a lot of it in Grahamville County and Orange County and Durham County and Wake County. Sometimes the county bought the land up, and sometimes, uh, these conservancies bought the land up, but the point of the whole thing was to conserve the land and not develop it. And so, the natural runoff from that property, we asked for credit, stormwater credit for that from Environmental Management Commission, and, uh, credit to the department, they had a hearing on it, and they, they denied that. And, uh, common sense tells you that it does not, common sense doesn't always rule over there with some of the bureaucracy over there. We've had several problems, but I wanted to make you aware of that, that you may hear something from that, particularly from Durham County and Wake County and some of the cities within those counties, because they've spent a lot of money on doing things to protect Falls Lake and Jordan Lake. And, uh, it looks like that the bureaucracy just won't listen. I, you know, they had a big squabble a while back about impervious area, there was areas that wanted to use impervious type block on the parking lots, or pervious type block instead of impervious, that allowed water to filter through that and get back into the groundwater and be filtered through stone. And they said stone was not impervious, but the last time I checked, that's what they put in drain fields and under, and under drains is stone for the water to filter through. So, the, the rock itself's not impervious, but the void place, space is. I just wanna bring to your attention that, uh, you may see something about this. We've not exactly decided what direction we're going in, but I suspect that, uh, some of the larger counties are gonna have a real issue with the fact that they've been out here and spent large amounts of money on tracts of land anywhere from twenty or thirty acres up to as much as a hundred acres in some of them, and they got, they're not gonna be allowed to get any credit for that. And, uh, I think it's just an example of the bureaucracy not paying attention to reality. That's my... That's my spill on that. Tracy and I went over there and met with a group with the department a few weeks ago, and I think he sort of realized what I've been telling him, that he's dealing with bureaucracy no matter who's in charge. I just want to throw that out there. I think Sybil's got an agenda item for us at our next meeting to deal with some of this or at least discuss some of the stormwater issues.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, real quick, on the library board, and the library has a new employee, her name is Becky Snyder. She's a reference librarian, and she does technology classes, research, local history and genealogy. She is here to help the citizens of Person County, so not only is she doing librarian type work, but we were talking during a meeting the other day that she will help people who are technology challenged, get their iPads, their iPhones, their smartphones and things of that nature up to speed where they can download books. They have a conglomerate with other counties, cities, municipalities, where they've gone in and bought iBooks, and they have audiobooks and things of that nature. So I would suggest that if you haven't been to the library lately, if you don't have a library card, go there rather than signing up for a paid subscription service. You can go to your library and check books out, audiobooks and things of that nature, and not have to pay it, because you're already paying for it as a county taxpaying citizen. So I would suggest that the seniors, you know, touch base with her, they're really good, she's jumping in there and getting...
We've already met with her, we're working out.
Some technology class. Okay, cool. Well, that's good. Very nice person, her and her partner are farmers, and we talked a little bit about the farm program that we just put in place. They like to do natural farming and organic farming, and so if you get a chance, stop by there to see her, and if you have any technology issues, she'll be more than happy to help.
All right. Anybody got anything else? All right. I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose to consider the acquisition or lease of real property with the following people, county manager Heidi York, Brenda Reeves, Ron Acock, Ellis Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.